I'd like to call the -- to order the special meeting of the City Council of the Atherton Channel, Bayneage District for February 12th, 2013 at 6:00 PM. And since it's not on the agenda, but I've been advised by the City Attorney and City Manager that we can, if we'd like, stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and so I'd like to do that.
(inaudible) to the fire of the United States of America and to our mother, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Councilman, have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Weest?
Here.
Councilmember Dobbie?
Here.
Councilmember Winmer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carlson?
Here.
Mayor Lewis?
Here. So before I open the meeting up to public comments, which is next on our agenda, I just want to thank my fellow councilmembers for making time to come to this special meeting tonight, and all the members of the public who have taken time out of their busy lives to attend this special meeting. Thank you very much. The reason I called this special meeting is because the topic of our discussion tonight, I believe, is of the utmost importance and deserves a special meaning and special attention. And it should not just be folded into the regular agenda items at our regular council meeting, which is going to be next week on the 20th. My hope is that tonight, we will be able to have an open, respectful, productive dialogue with all councilmembers, staff, and members of the public on the proposed process and direction that staff is proposing regarding the development of a master plan for our town's civic buildings. And what I believe is most important, how our residents can be actively involved in this process, and how we may move these very important projects along most expeditiously. So, that being said, I thank you again, and I will open the floor up for public comments. And since this is a special meeting, the comments will have to be limited to just what is on the agenda only. It's different from a regular council meeting. So, are there any members of the public who'd like to make a public comment at this time? Sure.
You may just certainly speak during the items.
And you can speak during the items also. Oh, and one more thing. At the back, we've -- if you're shy and you don't want to speak in public, but you have comments or thoughts that you'd like to share with us, there is a little form that we've left at the podium, and also at the front podium, Don, where you can write down your thoughts, give it to the City Manager, and if it's appropriate during the meeting, we can read them, or we'll post them on our website, so that all these comments will have their voices be heard. Okay? So, Rosemary, you want to start?
Yes. My name's Rosemary Malvech. I live at 90 Lloyd and Drive. I just have two comments. One, I want to make sure, and I'm not sure that I read all the material as carefully as I should, but I have not noticed an inclusion of attention to the role of the depot in our city center. I think that's important. Even though we don't have Monday through Friday service now, we continue to try to get it reinstated. And we do have it on weekends, and it is historically and architecturally an important part of the center of our town. And we should not plan, have a master plan regarding the town center without paying attention to that and including that. And the other thing is a semantic issue. We were talking about the town center. Now I see community center, and I think that's a subtle difference, and it has to do with the function of what we expect this master plan to be fulfilling, or the city center to be fulfilling. I think there are differences. The town is much more centrally focused than the community is, and we just need to figure out what we want it to do, and what we want the various buildings in the town center to support. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Yes, please.
Roger Schwab, Atherton Avenue. In reading through the agenda and some of the comments here, I just have a couple of questions. In the, I think it's the manager's report, it makes the notation that fiscal impact is none, and I'd be asking, how are we going to fund this today? How are we going to fund the construction of it? Once again, it's done in three years. And then, as the prior woman mentioned, I don't know how subtle a difference it is between a community center and a town center, but we all voted on a town center, which was to include certain structures and not to include others, and the other that it didn't include was clearly the library. I'm not saying it's good or bad, but why did we all go through the trouble of voting if now we're changing what we all voted to approve? That's my question.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Yes, thank you.
I'm John Worthing. I live at 98 Houston Avenue in Atherton. And I was very vocal in my not liking moving the library to over Palm Park. I tend to agree that it should be a town center. I think what this town really lacks is a there. And when every travel to the great places in the world, every little town, every little village has a feeling of that there's a there there. We kind of lack that. So I would like to see a town center here with a there. I think that the one thought that I've had, I don't think anybody really looked at moving the yard, moving the street closer to the railroad tracks and picking up the real estate that's the street. I'm not sure that the planners were that particularly challenged, or, you know, that creative. So I think there's a lot of room here. I think there's a lot of great things to do, and I think we have an opportunity here to make this town get a little more there, something that would really be of great pride to us all. I was in the Santa Barbara courthouse this weekend, and it is one of those architecturally stunning buildings I've ever been in my life. And I would think that this town can afford to have something that's a true landmark. And I think it would bring up the pride of the town, and therefore the value of our properties.
Thank you very much.
Very much in favor of one simple area.
Good. Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak at this time? Seeing no more public comments, I'll bring it back to the agenda, and--
Excuse me, will you respond to the questions that were asked during the public comment?
Usually not. Here's the dilemma. If you speak early, you now are out of order, and what you'll now get to hear is the staff report, council comments, and hopefully staff will respond to those during those. Otherwise, the Brown Act says the only thing you can get is a very brief comment like, "We'll get back to you," things like that. It's absolutely inappropriate for them to go out of order and start taking it. Otherwise, it just makes chaos of the agenda. So, the answer is, hopefully, the staff will respond to them. We've been writing the questions down, but probably not till the middle of the meat of the items that comes up.
Okay.
I'd like to ask our City Manager to present item number one in staff report, please.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the report that I'm going to present this evening actually covers items coming through four in terms of asking for the direction from the council. In January, the council directed staff to return with amendments to Resolution 1216 to formally disband the Town Center Task Force and the Atherton Library Buildings Steering Committee. At that time, you also directed staff to create a community center advisory committee to include as part of its task assisting with the development of a master plan for the Town Center, library, or community center. In order to formally create the new committee and appoint members, the council has to adopt revisions to that resolution and establish the committee's charter. Following the establishment of the committee, staff will notify the residents about the committee and begin a recruitment for volunteers to serve with a March 5 closing date for applications. And appointments will be scheduled for council approval at the March 20th council meeting, and then the committee meetings can begin as soon as conveniently possible thereafter. Part of this evening's agenda is the creation of the charter for the advisory committee, and it's expected that the committee will be a fundamental part of the project. The committee will work with staff and with input from town residents, assist in the development of a master plan or visioning process for the community center, which includes facilities for the town administration, the police department, public works department, building and planning departments, the council chambers, the Atherton Library, possibly the community meeting rooms, and other outdoor spaces. The committee will play a key role in involving the residents of Atherton in key decisions, gathering broad public input, and assisting with the vision. Prior to the election in 2012, the library and town center projects were doing independently and independent data gathering and architect involvement in part of their processes. They had studies that were done prior to their formation, like the needs assessment that was done prior to the formation of the library building steering committee, but became a part of their discussion. However, after the election, it became important to consider the Atherton Library as part of the town center complex itself with an overall master plan for the area. Neither architect that was involved with either of those committees had a master plan within their scope of work, but the master plan will be an important component to the success of the project. This evening, in addition to the creation of the committee and establishment of this charter, the council was asked to provide staff with some specific direction on the following issues. Number one, identify a committee size and confirm the selection process. You should consider a manageable committee size that will both be able to work on the various tasks that you're assigning them, but not too large that it becomes unwieldy to give a forum. Staff recommends a committee of seven to nine plus two council members with membership that represents a diverse segment of the community, both demographically, geographically, and skills, expertise, and interests. Staff proposes that the town begin advertising for the committee membership tomorrow, and send a letter to residents advising them of the project, soliciting their interest on serving on the committee, and advising them to look to the town websites for updates and more information as the project evolves. The recruitment would be held open until March 5th, at which time a subcommittee of the council, the order for the two council members that would be appointed as members, can review membership applications if there are more than 12 applicants, and the full council can appoint members at the March 20th meeting. Meetings can begin immediately thereafter. Staff also recommends or suggests that the council, the two council-appointed members, host an open house to bring awareness to the project, educate prospective applicants about the history of the projects, the work that was done today, advise the applicants about any time commitments that might be required, project path, invite applicants on a tour of the existing library and the town center facilities. This is hoped that that would occur prior to the March 5 closing of some middle of applications. The staff liaisons to the project and leads are myself, Police Chief Ed Flint, Community Services Director Mike Kashiwagi, and City Engineer Gordon Seibert. So, that's one area for direction to staff. The second is how you'd like the committee to function. The council should discuss and provide direction on how you'd like it to function. In other words, the primary goal is to engage the community and solicit feedback, but the committee can do that in any number of ways. They can solicit feedback using workshops and forums, or alternatively, they can form subcommittees and go out and investigate various project priorities and components, and then provide feedback to the full committee, and then provide summary report back to the council. Staff will assist the committee by providing expertise, assisting with scheduling, developing a framework for the community feedback portion of the project, administrative support, and general guidance. Thirdly, provide direction to staff on the architectural firms and process. As has been mentioned, the library building steering committee and the town center task force both had architects involved with their process, but neither of them had in their scope a master plan. With the change in project scope and the inclusion of the master plan and the inclusion of the library, the work has been significantly changed. So, while both the town center task force and the town center task force and library steering committee went through different processes to select their architects, the council can choose one, both, or neither of the two architects. If you choose neither, we have to go back out and do a formal request for proposal. If you choose one, then that architect would serve as the project lead. If you choose both, then we would select one of those architects to serve as the lead, and the other would be the subconsultant to that architect. With respect to the master plan component of the project, whatever architect is scheduled for the project, whether it's new or existing, a master plan would be completed. The architectural firm could use in-house staff if they have the expertise. If they don't, then they could have a contract for it with our approval, or we find someone to do that independently in town contracts on its own. So those are the three areas of direction. There were a couple of questions that came up. One was with respect to fiscal impact. The fiscal impact section of the report only applies to the report itself, not the actual project. That's a fiscal impact that the council will see at a later date. The fiscal impact of providing this report and this information to the council is none. The town center versus community center, again, that's the discretion of the council, whether you'd like to call it the town center advisory committee, community center advisory committee. I think the sentiment that was voiced this evening is we're looking for, looking to try and create a place here that people would identify as the town center, Atherton Town Hall, and it would describe the kinds of services one would expect to find here. Inclusion of the depot in the master plan, I don't think we can miss the depot as part of that master plan. We're going to have to either design around it, and in the staff report, I do kind of mention that that's something that the community can certainly provide input to, how you'd like that incorporated into the master plan itself, and how we design through with and around the high-speed rail. Moving the courtyard is certainly a possibility that could be looked at from an architectural perspective, if all things are open and on the table, again, we could certainly do that. That concludes the staff report, and I can answer any questions. You have the charter before you and the attached resolution. That's the only action item for this evening. The rest is providing direction. And I can read through A through F of the charter if you like, or leave that to council discussion.
Thank you very much. So, I'd like to bring it back to council for council members to have an opportunity to ask any clarified questions or technical questions, and then open it back up to the public for feedback on how this sounds to you and the direction we're going. I think the intent of calling this special meeting is to gain input from interested residents. There is, part of the agenda packet is an application for the committee, and that's one of the key ingredients of forming this citizens committee to help us reach out to the broad base of residents at large for their input on this whole process. It seems that the master plan idea was very strongly put forth back in the fall of 2011 by over 300 people who had signed a petition. So, and that idea has followed through the whole way and throughout the ballot measure of 2012. So, I'll just start. Does anybody want to go first, or shall I start with Councilmember Weest, since you're at the end there, and put you on the hot side, if you have any technical questions or about the City Manager's report that you'd like to ask right now?
I won't feel like I'm being picked on, so. I had a couple of questions. If in selection of either one of the existing architects, can we simply modify their scope of work if we select either one?
Yes.
Okay, so there would be no delay, per se?
Correct.
Then I didn't notice anywhere within this where if, in the committee selection related to the community center committee, if they wanted to create a ad hoc committee, was there any--
There was some discussion of that in terms of how you want them to function. They could, again, go out and do workshops, they could do community forums, or they could, you know, form those subcommittees amongst themselves, smaller than a forum, and task those subcommittees with some specific purposes to then go out and then come back to the full committee with feedback.
Do we need to identify that process, though?
I think this evening, you'd be providing some direction to staff as they work with the committee to do that. Within the charter, it gives them the flexibility to do that under item D. The CCAC may form ad hoc subcommittees and/or host community workshops to involve a broader base of residents for the purposes of information gathering on specific issues, thus creating more community involvement and more in-depth visioning. So they have the flexibility to do that, but if the council desires them to go in a specific direction, providing that specificity this evening would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Dobbie?
You know, if we're going to get this thing finished in three years, we're going to have to get moving. And my feeling is that, you know, the master plan is going to require a large amount of review by both the council and by residents. And just as an example, one of the residents, Phil Lively, did a master plan over the weekend, one weekend, some time ago. And while I'm not saying that's should be the master plan, I think we got to get something that people can talk about right away, so that they can start giving us their ideas, rather than asking people to give ideas without-- I've always found if you have something already in place, and you put it out, then people can say, "I don't like that," or "I like that." It's a quicker way of doing it than just waiting until somebody comes up with a general master plan. So, that would be one of my suggestions. My second thing is that, you know, on the architect, I personally was not very impressed with the architect that we had previously for the town center. And one of my concerns is, you know, I think the architects for the town center were doing it pro bono. Now, you know, that sounds good, except, you know, you have to say, if people are doing things pro bono, it probably means they're not too busy. And if they're not too busy, it probably means they're not the best. So my suggestion would be that this time, we don't necessarily look for pro bono, that when we go out for an architect, we're willing to pay him, we're willing to pay him, make sure that they are the best qualified. Because, as I say, the one that we had previously, and I think we need to check his references much more thoroughly, because I've heard a lot of different things about him, if we decide on him, but I would also say we put it out again, and we do not ask them to do a pro bono. We say we're willing to pay for whatever it is that they want to provide for us.
Councilmember Dobbie?
Yeah.
I really, I just have to respond to your comments, because I think your comments are being made in a disparaging way to a very, very reputable and highly talented and well-known architectural firm. And I know that Councilmember Carlson and I were both on the committee at the time and when they were chosen, and then Councilmember Winmer was also on the committee, working with them. And the reason that they were doing a pro bono, and they only did a conceptual design, and we had two architects do a pro bono conceptual design. This architect that ended up being chosen was, has been working with Sacred Heart Schools in doing their master planning and remodeling. The other architect did the Portola Valley. So I think that some of your comments should be tempered with more information than what you're saying, and I--
I'm not disparaging--
--wholeheartedly disagree with your comments there. I'm sorry, I respectfully disagree--
It's your right to disagree. It's my right to tell you what I think.
Right, okay, but--
And I just have to say that--
They are very reputable.
I'm not the only one who has had some very negative comments on the designs that we had from the previous architect. So, you know, I'm not disparaging, I'm just giving you my comments, which is clearly my right anytime, either as a council member, any other time, and, you know, you have your opinions, and I have mine.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Winmer?
So, are we going through the whole document, giving our comments, or just the first section or what? I'm not really sure, because I've got comments scattered throughout, and I'm happy to go through them all right now if you'd like. I don't know.
It's up to you. I think that what we'd like, the City Manager's report, if you have comments specifically on how he's laid this out, technical or just kind of clarification of what, how they're saying this?
Great. First off, I agree, and we've talked about it, we need to do a master plan, whether or not we get started and we like to say, "Hey, go do everything, and the first thing you're going to do is a master plan." Because I think really, how you build a building and things like that is going to determine what the master plan is. When I look over at, I guess on the second page, talks about a master plan for the community center, which will include the town administration, the Department of Public Works, public works, building and planning, council chambers, Atherton Library, and then it adds community meeting rooms, and then outdoor spaces. So I think that we're actually, a master plan for all those things, could include all those things, yes, but I think that we really have two projects. One is a library, and one is a town center that would house our town staff, the building department, the planning department, and the police department. So I'm not really sure if we're adding things to it or not. It wasn't clear, because we keep, we're adding things throughout the write-up. It added all this stuff. One of the other things that I would like to bring up, too, is that the community center advisory committee, we seem to have dropped off a little aspect, which is raising the funds. Now, we had two committees. We had a library planning committee, which was looking at how to design, they ran a project for looking at what the needs assessment were, and then worked with an architect for conceptual design, et cetera. And then we did a similar thing for the new town center, but the new town center also was developing some project plans and designs, so that we could go out to the community and start raising some funds. So, it looks like the fundraising seems to have dropped off, and that's a very important part of it, because of course, the bond measure said that you can't spend that stuff. So, I think that that, I'd like to see that added back in. And I think that really, you know, when we first talked about a master plan, it was Mr. Kashiwagi said that that's going to cost about, he estimated it at $90,000, and he was saying it was going to be, you know, three to six months. So, I do think that, you know, the master plan is phase one, and then these other projects would, they're followed. Again, you know, I think that versus a master plan and the design of these projects, once we know where we're going to put the facilities and how we're going to put them, either together or separate, the architect firm is then going to look at them, modeling them differently. So, you know, an architect firm that was looking at, say, designing a library that was going to potentially be in the park, had a different look and feel than what was going to be determined if it was going to be over right behind us, or over off of Fair Oaks, because, you know, there were the two locations at this site, and that's one of the discussions that we actually had at this council, is that really where we're going to go and how it's going to be laid out is going to be different based on where we're going to be. So, I think that, you know, I urge the council not to move too quickly. I do think that we need to get going, but I'm not, but I'm not trying to delay things. But at the same time, I do believe that, you know, the master plan should come first, and then these other two projects should go, and maybe that was what the intent was, but that's not how I read it. So, on the committee size and things like that, which was in your report as you brought, I do think that it's-- you know, I don't know, I'd like to hear from the public when they get up, but having a suspense date of, we're going to start taking applications, and we're going to close them off by the 5th of March, when we're not going to really look at them as a council until the 20th, I think that that's, you know, we might be maybe losing some people, so we might want to extend that. And I didn't understand the need for us to suddenly have a two council member committee, as you proposed, to look into that. We haven't done that in years. I realize it's in the plans, but when the other questions came up on procedural things, I got an email from Mr. Connors that said that council processes is really just, you know, we don't follow those, so you can't go back and say, "That's the reason." That's what he told me. I got it written writing up, "Would you like to do it?" I do think that also the subcommittees, which Mr. Weest brought up, I think that's a great idea, as long as the subcommittees potentially could be expanded to include other people that aren't on the, whatever, the seven people or whatever, nine people that are on the committee, they may say, "Well, we want, we got a subcommittee to look at, say, content of so-and-so with regards to the library." Well, there are certain people that are very familiar with libraries, and they should be included, whether they make it onto the cut for the, for the overall committee or not. So, I think really, we should have maybe a little clarity on the subcommittees, that it could include people outside the named seven or whatever we want to pick. We had the question already on the architectural firm. I'm just not sure that one firm really is the right, is the right answer. We, there are two different types of buildings, potentially, and they're going to have two different types of needs, and they're going to have different service levels. So I think that, you know, I think we should really, really consider that. And I was questioned really on the, you know, your comment here, George, with regards to, well, maybe the architectural firm could use their own in-house staff or complete a master plan if they don't have the expertise contract out, or they could have the town contract out. I think that we should make the decision, not have whoever we choose or whatever. It should be our decision. It's our plan. And so, I took a little exception to that comment. And so that is, now I'm at the end of the City Manager's report. Thank you for listening, and happy Mardi Gras. Well, my G's. Thank you.
Let me begin by saying, city manager, I think you did a good job with your report. And I think you've covered a lot of ground here. I guess my concern is that we not try to do too much tonight. I think that we've laid the groundwork, but I think to try to get down to specifics in too much detail would be a mistake. I think that there's a lot of, lot of additional thinking and formation to be and, and interfacing in the committee with the town staff and things like that on the curve before really getting down to trying to decide who the architects are going to be and that sort of thing. Way I view this committee is that it's to facilitate resident engagement to contribute their timely ideas for planning a new town center. Generate community interest, ensure information pertaining to meetings, issues and opportunities to participate are adequately disseminated to all Atherton households. I look at it as being advisory and bringing together all points of view, not acting as a filter. We should provide, I believe, council with all, with summaries of issues and points of view of each issue and not a decision-making body. It should ensure, up to ensure transparency that all points of view will be heard and considered. Now, a couple of comments were raised by other council members, and I have them. Some of these is my own questions. I don't feel that the financing role should be part of the committee. I think that that is something that is, is to be kept separate apart. I think the selection of professional service providers, I think that the committee can play a role in interfacing with, with the staff and, and thought process, but I certainly agree that the final decision has to rest with the council. How the committee will assist in the development of a master plan and how that is envisioned, I'd like maybe have you expand on that a little bit more as to how you see the, the role of this committee, how you envision their role in assisting you, the staff, in developing this master plan framework. Then I'd like to have other questions.
Do you want to answer this question now, or...
Sure, with respect to the master plan framework and getting the committee involved. Theoretically, you've got a community advisory committee out there. You've got an architect or a design professional or a master planning professional on board already, and they would sit down into a master planning visioning workshop, so to speak, with this committee, soliciting input, gathering feedback. And they may have one or several meetings on that particular issue where the committee and their expertise provides input into functionality of the buildings, what they'd like to see, what kinds of open spaces. Are we, are we looking for community meeting rooms? What kinds of services would you like in the library? What would you like the library to look like? Where you'd like the flow to be, just providing that general input to the master planning process.
Yeah, I think, I think that your comment about the, the meeting rooms, I, I see that as a, an area that we could have it in the town center, to speak of the town center, or the library. And so the, the function and size of, of the buildings will be a key, key decision that has to be made at some point, hopefully, early on.
What we're kind of missing here, and it came up in the comments that there's no there there this evening, is what are people looking for in their downtown town center space? You know, are they looking for open spaces, or are they looking for, to be able to walk from the library to a park setting, to, to a park bench and use Wi-Fi and do all those kinds of things to access a digital library? Are they looking for community meeting rooms? Where you can come to the town center and, and host a gathering outside of the council chambers? And like the vice mayor says, whether that's in the library or the town center, that's kind of up for discussion.
So when you say provide direction where needed, that'd be the type of thing you're talking about?
Exactly.
Good. Personally, I, I'd like to see the committee start out with a, with a, with seven residents. You can always add to it and more if needed. The, the calling process, if there are more than 12 applications, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that. I, I think that this council could handle that process through a series of votes if necessary. It doesn't have to be, you know, real, real efficient process. It can be, maybe take a while to rule it down, but I, I just don't see that... Let's get, let's don't get tied up in, in taking a step that might be viewed in a, a critical way as far as part of the process is concerned. I'm, I'm, the open house idea, timing-wise, that with the March 5 deadline, that, that seemed to be, you know, kind of, kind of tough to do the kinds of things you were laying out there in, in that timeframe. I, I just question whether that's doable. Who's going to set the agenda for the meetings of the vice mayor?
Well, like most of the, it would follow the same rules and procedure of your existing committees, and we set according to those procedures.
The advisory committee is to be a Brown Act committee.
Yes.
The members on the community center advisory committee would have to adhere to all of the meeting rules of the Brown Act because if you have to have their meetings noticed and things like that. That's why the idea that the city manager brought forth of having ad hoc committees, subcommittees from those, from the main advisory committee to do further outreach on task-oriented projects and information gathering projects would not be under a Brown Act. So they could go into the community in a very free form and free way without being bound by noticing their meetings, and they could gather information. They could do the research. They could get community input better and then funnel it back to the advisory committee at large, which then would...